I'll call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please remain standing. It doesn't look like Ken Brown, pastor of Presbyterian Church, is here. Perhaps he's just running late. Is there anyone else here from the Presbyterian Church? No? Okay, then we will just have a moment of silence, please. Okay, thank you very much. Please be seated. And can we have the roll call, please, Beth?
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Here.
Vice Mayor DePorter is absent. Councilmember Leger?
Here.
Councilmember Magazine?
Here.
Councilmember Yates?
Present.
Councilmember Hanson?
Here.
And Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Okay, I have two proclamations to read from our Sister Cities. The first one we're going to be doing is for Dierdorf, Germany, and the second is for Samos, Poland. Before I do that, we have many dignitaries in the audience, and I would like to recognize our visitors from Poland and from Germany. First, I would like to welcome from Poland, Vice President of the City of Samos, Magdalena Dolgen. Welcome. Vice President of the City of Samos, Andrzej Sapas...
Zasostillo.
Zasostillo. And from Germany, the mayor of Dierdorf, Thomas Wies. His wife Susan, and son Katja. Also from Germany, Bettina Boxler. Is she here? Martin and Bruni Hegelmann. And they were both chaperones for the students. Charminda and Elman Hartmann, and their daughter Mira. Bernd and Andrea Lucinski. Okay, and we also have our representatives of Sister Cities, Christine Colly. Consul Borgemil Horshum of Poland. Elizabeth Monte Horshum. And former mayor Sharon Morgan. Okay, I hope I didn't miss anyone.
Estelle?
And Estelle? Oh. Estelle Mackey. Jean Lenze. Okay. Did I get everybody? Okay, good. All right, now we can read our proclamations. Whereas the Sister City program was inaugurated by the President of the United States of America in 1956 to establish, maintain, and foster greater friendship and understanding between the people of the United States and other nations through the medium of direct personal contact; whereas the twinning concept was established in Europe to maintain and foster the same goals and aspirations; and whereas the citizens of the city of Dierdorf, Germany, and the town of Fountain Hills, Arizona, formed a sister-city relationship in March of 2004; and whereas the Day of German Unity commemorates the 1990 reunification of Germany and is celebrated each year on October 3rd; and whereas President Obama proclaimed October 6, 2016, as German-American Day; and whereas the sister-city affiliation requires support from the citizens and governments of both communities; whereas the town council recognizes and commends the many positive outcomes that have resulted from this sister-city relationship; and whereas the city of Dierdorf, Germany, and the town of Fountain Hills, Arizona, are sister cities that extend hands of friendship and share cultural understanding with each other. Now therefore I, Linda M. Kavanaugh, mayor, do hereby proclaim appreciation for the friendship and partnership between Dierdorf, Germany, and the town of Fountain Hills. Now we have a proclamation for Samos, Poland. Whereas the Sister City program was inaugurated by the President of the United States in America in 1956 to establish, maintain, and foster greater friendship and understanding between the people of the United States and other nations through the medium of direct personal contact; and whereas the twinning concept was established in Europe to maintain and foster the same goals and aspirations; and whereas the citizens of the city of Samos, Poland, and the town of Fountain Hills, Arizona, formed a sister-city relationship in June of 2014; and whereas the town of Fountain Hills recognizes October as Polish Heritage Month; and whereas the sister-city affiliation requires support from the citizens and governments of both communities; and whereas the town council recognizes and commends the many positive outcomes that have resulted from this sister-city relationship; whereas the city of Samos, Poland, and the town of Fountain Hills, Arizona, are sister cities that extend hands of friendship and share cultural understanding with each other. Now therefore I, Linda M. Kavanaugh, mayor, do hereby proclaim appreciation for the friendship and partnership with Samos, Poland, and the town of Fountain Hills. Now we have, we have proclamations to present to you, so if all of those dignitaries whose names were called, if you could come to the front. We're also going to take a picture. Yes, thank you very much, but we had also a present from the school, Mr. Martin Hegeman, a teacher from the Martin Butzer Gymnasium, from the Sister School.
Yeah, what shall I say? We arrived here on Monday night, and we have a wonderful program here at Fountain Hills High School, and I'd just like to thank all the teachers that are involved in our program. So, the project is to paint a mural for the school, together with the students from Poland, and we are very thankful that it all works out very fine. We're really having a good time.
Wunderbar.
Yeah. So, to show you how thankful we are, we have a little book with informations about the area that we come from, and that I give to you.
Yes, sure.
Good morning. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference. I would like to thank you all who came to the conference.
Okay, now we go to the recognition of our Tourism Division for awards received from the International Festival and Events Association. Gold, Best Organizational Website. Silver, Best Single Magazine Display Ad. Silver, Best Ad Series. Bronze, Best Miscellaneous On-Site Decor.
Grady?
Yes, Mayor Council, as the mayor just indicated, our Tourism Division recently won four awards from the International Festival and Events Association. This is an organization that is internationally known for its membership. And this is, as you know, when you have peers judge you, that's always the highest honor. And I'm very proud of this team, as well as Mark Mayer, the Community Services Director. We have, as you know, a very limited budget and resources, and they have just done wonders with the resources that they have. And they were able to compete with, while some of these categories are in, you know, cities of comparable size or such, a number of these other cities are towns or cities that have much more resources to put into these. And it shows you really that we've got a great staff here, and they do a super job. With that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Recreation and Tourism Supervisor, Rachel Goodwin.
Good evening. As Grady mentioned, we are here to recognize the awards that were bestowed at the International Festival and Events Association Annual Conference. So we're going to give you quite a quick highlight of what that is. Grady kind of gave you an overview of the program. It is an international festival convention, I guess, and it was actually held in Tucson, so we had the opportunity to go in person, which is rare. He mentioned that it is a very broad-reaching program. The association hosts and recognizes groups like the Tournament of Roses and the Kentucky Derby, large, international-scale art fairs, and now the town of Fountain Hills as well. So we are very, very excited to be honored among those. I'm going to ask Grace to go through real quick, just so you guys can have an idea of what it was that won, in terms of, so you can kind of put a visual with that.
Good evening, Council. The first award bestowed on us at this conference was quite thrilling, as it was a very long and deep labor of love. But we were fortunate enough to win Gold Status for Best Organizational Website, which is experiencefountainhills.org. We then went on to also be fortunate enough to receive Silver in the category of Best Single Magazine Display Ad. This ad was most prominently featured on the back cover of Phoenix Magazine's Travel Guide. This is a snapshot of our ad series that was used in all of Tourism's marketing campaign for fiscal year 2015-2016. That won Silver for Best Ad Series. And then finally, we brought home the Bronze for Best Miscellaneous On-Site Decor, and this was our Insta-Frame for Insta-Fame at the Turkey Trot.
That one was a fun little surprise. And then this is actually a shot of just Grace and I accepting the Gold Level Award at the conference there onsite. Because there are so many awards and so many different brackets in terms of budget, you only get recognized if you do win a Gold Level, so it was really exciting to be able to go up to the front and be recognized. Grace made, added that this is the second year in a row that we have won a Best Ad Series for our budget, so hopefully we'll go for the trifecta next year.
And I have the presentation here for you.
Ladies, what ad agency are we using? That's sarcasm. You're supposed to brag on the Rachel and Grace ad agency.
Fountain Hills, Inc.
There you go.
Okay, ladies. Well, not maybe. Grady?
You bet.
Grady? That's great. Good to have you.
That's the only reason.
Quit being so underachieving.
Recent events?
Yeah, we're going to do you.
Okay.
Update on activities of AmeriCup Association of Governments Regional Domestic Violence Council.
As everyone may notice, everyone's wearing purple because October is National Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Governor Ducey and Fountain Hills has lit up its Capitol buildings. I don't know if you noticed, when you came in today, we had purple lights around the building. And today is National Wear Purple Day, and so I appreciate everyone on council wearing purple and supporting the cause. Some quick updates, as I've been sharing over the last couple of years. Domestic violence is everybody's business. We've got to take a stand, but it can be stopped. Some quick stats, one in four women are affected by domestic violence, and one in seven men. It affects all segments of society. There's no one segment, the affluent or the working class. It affects everybody. On Friday, September 23rd of last month, myself and there was about 15 of us took part in a workshop studying the effectiveness of our system. We're working towards formulating a regional plan to end domestic violence, and we have four areas of focus. Funding, as you can imagine, that's probably one of the biggest ones, training and education, coordination and collaboration, and the services. We yielded 15 strategies after that. I won't name those, but feel free to go to azmag.gov to see that. This is exciting because domestic violence has always been an isolated issue in different municipalities, and it crosses all boundaries. So we're really working as a region to combat this. Some big things that are coming out of this are, and I hate to bring it up, but the aspect of stalking. And stalking was one of those that kind of fell under the radar because it was so difficult to pass laws or even investigate it. But some tips, if you feel that some stalking is occurring, is turn off your GPS and these kind of devices. You can always turn it back on. Use safe device if you're afraid your computer at home or at work has spyware until it gets checked out. If you feel you are getting stalked, or anybody is, make sure you keep track of emails and correspondence. That will help prosecute this. And although social media is a wonderful form of communication, insight, and awareness, be smart and share that with your children, grandchildren, your moms, your dads, because sometimes you don't realize you're posting something and it has your address or your home or something like that. So just be smart when it comes to that. This is an exciting time for us because we're really getting to the nuts and bolts of what our group has been working towards, and so I'm excited to be part of this group. There's several events that were going on all throughout October. My company, we're sponsoring a fun run this Saturday. It's a 5K. No, I'm not taking part doing the Make a Difference Day here in Fountain Hills, but I'm there in spirit. But if you need more information, go to azmag.gov under Domestic Violence. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And thank you once again for volunteering for the MAG Domestic Violence Council.
Thank you, my pleasure.
Any speaker cards on call to the public?
No, Mayor.
Okay, if not, I have eight items on a consent agenda. And can I get a motion to approve as written?
Mayor so moved.
In a second.
Okay.
And a roll call, please.
Councilmember Magazine?
Here.
Councilmember LaChee?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Yates?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
And Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Mayor six zero.
Thank you. Regular agenda item is discussion with possible direction to staff regarding the Fountain Hills bollard lighting. Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, before you, is an item to discuss the outdoor lighting that was installed a year ago last summer. As you recall, shortly after the lighting had been installed, we began to hear some concerns from residents that lived in the nearby area and others as well. And the staff and I initially tried to mitigate, figure out what was going on, what the concerns were, and essentially worked very closely with both Ted Blank and also Donna Brinkmeyer, who are also here tonight. I'm going to go ahead and call on Mark Mayer, our Community Services Director, who has a report that provides additional background and information. But one thing I just want to let you know, too, is we, at the direction of the council back in April, when this last was before the council, the staff and I worked on contracting with Kim Lee Horn, which is an independent engineering firm, to evaluate the lighting, determine if there were issues, and also to look at the specifications from the manufacturer to determine if there was an issue. As you recall, there was others, not necessarily Mr. Blank, but others in the community started questioning if we got what we paid for. And so anyways, we're going to address those concerns tonight, and then I know that they also wish to speak before you as well. With that, I will go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council. First, I want to add a disclaimer. Late this afternoon, we were introduced to a new computer system, so if there are some glitches along the way, I apologize. I'm not as quick-steady as some people are, but we will do our best. I mentioned this at the beginning of my comments in regards to the $237 that were purchased at a substantial cost in excess of $200,000 in the summer of 2015. And that installation took place and was completed, as you can see in the timeline that I provided you, in August. That wasn't really the beginning of this process, it was the end. And so I think it's important that we go back and take a long view of how we got to this particular point. Back in the late 90s, so we're approaching 20 years ago, there was a master plan put together for Fountain Park. It was a vision from the community that said, what are we, as a community, want to see developed in Fountain Park? And one of the ideas that came out of those discussions, and there were a number of discussions, was lighting of the pathway around the park for public safety and the ability for people to be able to use it at night. The gray color specifically was chosen because, if those of you may have an opportunity to look at the bollards earlier, we actually have two from our park site. The black one that we used for testing purposes that was in place about a month, and the gray one that we had used in the park for over a year now. And you can see there are substantial differences in the amount of film that has developed on the black and scratches as opposed to the gray copy. So those were the reasons why the gray color was actually chosen. Last bullet point there is the bollards were spaced specifically and GPS-located on the architectural drawings to reflect the fact that there needed to be sufficient amount of light going between the fixtures. As one light fixture, you walked away, got to the middle of the light fixture between the next one, which is approximately 20 feet between the fixtures. It varies a little bit around curves, et cetera. And that was designed to provide sufficient light for public safety and for ADA compliance. So that's why those lights are spaced the way they are, and that's why, like I said earlier, that the gray bollards were chosen. As was indicated, there were some concerns installed, or indicated about the lights themselves. We'd heard that the specifications did not match the bollards that we had purchased, and that the bollards were not zero up light but allowed light to shine above the fixture. We also earlier had heard that the bollards were, excuse me, were not in compliance with the town's ordinances. And the Senior Planning and Zoning Administrator, who was currently the Development Services Director, provided a letter, which is in your packet, stating that they did, in fact, meet the code at that time for compliance. It became clear in our discussions that neither I nor anybody else on the staff had the technical ability to evaluate the kind of information we were getting in regards to both from the manufacturer as well as from the group that was concerned about the lighting. And so we were able to get the services of Michael Colombo, who is a professional engineer specializing in electrical from Kim Lee Horn. We asked him to do several things for us at an expense to cover both the testing of what was out there, an evaluation of what was out there in the field, as well as provide a document to us, and you as well as have a copy of that that was included in my report. I should mention that in his report, he indicates that there was not a substantial amount of difference in his professional opinion between what he saw in the field and what the specifications were for the bollards that we received. I think the key in my mind, and I am by no means an electrical expert, but I think I'm a reasonable person, and I think most reasonable person would look at specifications that were done in a lab and printed as a lab are not going to match what you have in field conditions. That's just the reality. If you were to have taken the black bollards and put them in the field, they would have not matched the specifications, because you're taking controlled experiment in a lab and taking those results and trying to compare them in the field, where you have reflective surfaces like concrete sidewalk. So there are a number of options we felt like we needed to as best we could, and there are obviously more options than what I show here, because we have a number of different opportunities here. But it seemed like to us that the four leading ones are the ones that are in front of you, which are to replace the gray bollards with black ones at a cost of a little over $800 apiece for a total of $335,000. Plus, it's important to recognize that there would be tax and freight, and in addition to that, there would be installation costs and some means by which to get rid of the existing gray bollards disposal. The second bullet point, replace the gray caps with a black one at a cost of $1,000, or excuse me, $1,441 per bollard for a total of just over $400,000, again, plus tax, freight, and again, installation costs and some means to dispose of the existing caps. Relamp all of the gray bollards with a lower level of light.
Mark, if I could just have you go back and clarify also, that black one, the reason why it's so much higher than the actual replacement of a black bollard, you know, or with a black bollard, that's because that's a Louvre design with a different division of the same company. It's a different product line and not the same product line.
Correct. To take that a step further, the gray bollards that we chose are kind of, for lack of a better term, are kind of middle-of-the-road as far as cost. The Louvre that we could find that was compatible with this is a much more expensive brand, and that's why it's substantially more expensive. The third bullet point was to relamp all the gray bollards with a lower light level, and that would be a total of $77,000, a little over $77,000, again, plus tax, freight, installation charges, and some means to dispose of the existing lower light levels that we have. And finally, obviously, the other option is to leave the existing lights the way they are. With that, I will turn it over to Mr. Colombo, who has some information he wants to provide as well.
Mark, I know that we talked about this, and your report was already done and published, but the other option that we thought as well, you've been reading some information lately about, you know, the blue light cast of like first-generation LED lighting, and a lot of recent, you know, research has shown that it's best to go with a softer light. So the lights that we have are 4,000 Kelvin, which is the color, and the, a softer light would basically be a 3,000 Kelvin. And so, but it casts more of a softer, more of an orange glowy kind of light, so that's another option that is in this as well. And anything else that might come up through tonight's discussion?
The only other thing I would add before I turn it over to Mr. Colombo, and I indicated this in my report, that because this was a construction project that ended at the end of 2015, we no longer have any money left in that particular budget under construction for this project. So the money, if it was determined that we would take one of these paths, the first three bullet points, we would need to find those dollars.
Councilwoman Hanson?
Did you have a cost associated with number five?
With number five, my understanding is that it's the same cost as replacing the drive heads. There's just, in fact, if you were to do relamp these to the lower, dimmer lights, you would go from the, with the 3,000. So that's an option there. Or you could just, if the council wanted and just said, you know, we're satisfied with the lumens or the brightness, then you can just replace the 4,000 with the 3,000 Kelvin. So, but either way, if you were to replace these bulbs here that are just strictly, you know, much brighter to half the brightness, then you would want to definitely go to the 3,000 Kelvin at that time.
So that would be the 77 as well?
Exactly. And then the other option would be, obviously, through attrition, as these need to be replaced, you can also just replace them as they go with the, either the lowered, the dimmer ones, or definitely the, you know, the 3,000 Kelvin is what you'd want to go with.
Grady, do we know that the lower, dimmer lights would also be ADA compliant?
We do not. In fact, our evaluation, we don't have that information, because when we did the field test, and Mr. Colombo's going to be doing a report right after Mark's done here, we asked him if there was any kind of modeling, and just from a professional opinion that he rendered, he believes that it's going to be like, let's say you had 100 watt bulb and you drop down to a 50, but in this case, it's actually a little bit less, it'd be like a 45, you know, if you went from 100 watt down to a 45 watt. And you kind of can picture what that would be like in your home.
That's significant.
That's significant. And then, and then right now, the light, the way it's cast and the spacing and the bollards is so that the light is continuous. So if it's dimmer, there may be a dark area?
Yeah, you would start seeing a little bit more in the way of shadowing with the existing fixtures.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. Any questions before we go on?
Get the engineer.
Okay. Engineer.
You don't need to hear from me anymore. We'll collude with his comments, and then both of us will be here, obviously, answering any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, did you just state your name for the record? Thank you.
Mike Colombo, I'm with Kim Lee Horn. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilmembers, for allowing me to talk here today. As Grady and Mark mentioned, that Kim Lee Horn was contracted by the town to perform an independent lighting evaluation of these bollards due to the residential's concerns. Just for clarification purposes, the bollard that's out there, it's manufactured by Lithonia. That's the parent company of Lithonia, is a QD brand. It's this model, this DSXB, and it has, like Grady mentioned, it's a 4,000 Kelvin, correlated color temperature with a 700 milliamp driver. And that, that third option that Mark mentioned earlier, to lower the intensity, what it's actually would be doing is actually replacing that driver with a 700 milliamp driver with a 350 milliamp driver, and that just drives the LEDs at a lower current, which then drives down the wattage of the fixture itself. It's actually not changing the color of the actual fixture.
But you could change the color.
You could change the color, but that cost did not include that. I just wanted to kind of make that, make that clarification. It's, I understand it's difficult to understand at all. Okay. So what Kim Lee Horn's contract was to do is we performed field tests. So we went out there at night in early July, and we tested two bollards. One, the town, the town installed two black bollards, and then they also had their other aluminum bollards. To be able to make sure that we were kind of testing materials that were new, since the aluminum bollards were out there for about a year or so at that period of time, brand-new drivers were installed in those bollards. That way, we knew we were, whatever we measured in the field would be compatible with the new, with the new product off the shelf. And we took measurements. We took a lot of measurements. We took measurements at the ground, three feet high, five feet high, and 10 feet high. We took measurements one foot radius away from the bollard, three foot away from the bollard, five feet away from the bollard, and 10 feet away from the bollard. And we did this at a radial, at radial pattern, at 45 degrees, all the way around the bollard. And we used a light meter and both a horizontal to kind of get, you know, what light level you have on the ground, and we also did it in a vertical perspective to kind of identify what light levels you'd be getting in the face. Total of this was 256 measurement points of the entire bollard. And then the reason for taking that many measurement points is that way we can kind of compare all that data with what data the manufacturer's putting out there, that's publishing, since that's what the concern is, that the manufacturer was publishing fake stuff. So we went back to our, to our office, and we built this photometric model. And that's what we do when we, when we try to design lighting systems. We build a photometric model. It lets us know what, like what foot candle levels would be out on the path. That way, we know that we're able to meet, you know, meet guidelines for public safety and ADA requirements. The manufacturers of light fixtures, they publish a file, it's called an IES file. It stands for, it's the file type, excuse me. And in that file, there's a lot of information, and that information is put into our modeling software. And, well, okay, I guess then we continue to build our model. Within our model, which we have like a little, little sample of up there, that is a, you know, a sample of the bollard. We placed the concrete in our model, we placed the grass in our model, we have, they have reflective values, we give these, give these models, give these realistic items values, to kind of try to build as much comparison as we can to the real world. And here's some of the things that we found after we had compared. This is a little snippet of, of some of our results. So right here, in the, on the, things on the right, and I don't, this, okay, yeah, this column right here, okay? I don't know how easy to read. So, okay, thanks. So at the five feet, I just took a quick snap. This is five feet away from the bollard, so you're not right up next to it. And then both the, the column on the left's five feet high, so a little bit above the bollard, and then the column on the right's 10 feet high. So this right here are all the measurements that we measured in the field, and they range anywhere from about .15 to .5 foot candles. All of our modeled numbers are right here, and these measure anywhere between like one to two foot candles, essentially quite a bit higher. So our model is telling us that we would expect those values to be in the field. And then on the, on the 10-foot high, in the field, we're measuring between .1 and .3 foot candles, and in the, in the calculated model, we would measure between .5 and 1-foot candle. On average, on our field measurements, we're about 73 percent, excuse me, our, yes, our field measurements, the levels that we measure in the field, we're 73 percent less than anything that we modeled.
Sorry, Mayor.
Oh, sorry. Councilman Magazine?
Would you say that again and clarify that?
Yes. So we, of the measurements that we took in the field, all, 256 of them, they were 70, on average, 73 percent less than what our modeled values would tell us we should be seeing, just by looking at the published information by the manufacturer.
May I, Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Yates.
So in layman's terms, they're dimmer.
They're dimmer. They're darker. They're 73 percent darker. Three quarters. Three quarters of the dark.
I speak engineering.
And then here's, here's the information, kind of in a graphical format. The, I apologize, it's a little, little small, but the, the red values are kind of the values that we, that we got when we calculated it in our model, and the green is the field measurements. So on, if we look at just the points above the bollard, which is really what we're concerned about, of the five-foot and 10-foot measurements that we took, the 128 points that we took that were above the bollard, every single one of them was less than the modeled value. So some of the information that we do know, the Lithonia IES file that we downloaded was, was developed on a black bollard. They've come out and they've told us that. They've told us that because black is, black and dark bronze are their, are their most common products. They offer this product in eight, eight different finishes, that they only have the black bollard out there. They have the black bollard as their modeled one. And the other reason that they do that is because when it is black, it, black absorbs so much more light. And so that, from a photometric standpoint, from the amount of light that you'd really have on a path from a safety and security perspective, black would be the worst case. In our research, we realized that the town, the town chose an aluminum bollard, and not only an aluminum bollard, it's actually anodized aluminum, and I believe this is due to the affluent water in the lake. This is a custom finish from the manufacturer. It's not something that they offer standard. A request for deviation had to be submitted when the product was being purchased by the contractor for the manufacturer to be able to supply that, that finish on that bollard. Therefore, a very specific IES file for that custom finish is just, is just simply not And what this, what this all kind of comes down to is kind of how we, how we identify lighting, okay? So there's this IES standard, it's TM-15, and that's how we, that's how we classify lights, from a... from, from a, um, light distribution standpoint. They use what's called a bug rating, BUG. The B is backlight, how much light comes behind the fixture. U is uplight, how much light comes above the fixture, and G is a glare rating. Lithonia classifies the ballard that's out at the, out, out of, around the lake as it's a B1, so it's a little bit of backlight. U0, so they're claiming there's zero uplight, and a glare of 1. The uplight values that we're seeing in our model are from reflective surfaces underneath the ballard. There, and, and then other reflective adjacent surfaces. The way uplight is defined per IESNA, which is, that's the Illumination Engineering Society of North America. That is basically who kind of develops all of the lighting standards that we engineers follow. That uplight angle does not account for any directional impact on sky glow, nor does it quantify the impact of light from reflected ground surfaces and adjacent structures. Essentially, because of the aluminum ballard, the way it's literally designed, all the lights are up inside the fixture. It, uh, it's kind of hard to tell, someone laying down on, on the table over there. All the, the, you have a dome top and the fixture, the LED source is up in there, okay? None of that LED source is actually coming outside the fixture. All of it is coming, all of it is being projected downward. And therefore, that is why it is considered a nighttime sky-friendly, or excuse me, a dark, sky-friendly, full cutoff, zero uplight fixture. IES does not define any of those reflected lights from the structure as considering as part of sky glow, which is where we're coming into the fact that these manufacturers are not misleading information with their published data. And based on our field measurements being less than our calculated measure models, we believe that the IES file is representative of the measured values that we took in the field.
Okay. Uh, let's start with questions from Mike.
Okay.
Any questions?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah?
Yes. Um, thank you, Madam Mayor. So even though the light fixture's up in the dome, and the downlight meets the requirement as far as the governing body, as far as direct or indirect lighting, do the lumens or foot candles break any threshold of a direct light similar in ADA compliance?
Uh, no, not a direct light. It's all indirect light.
So no matter what, the downlight is not breaking any threshold of direct light required by ADA? Or, or, do you follow what I'm asking?
Yes, 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 yes.
Is the downlight lighter than certain direct lights?
Downlight, uh...
The, the indirect lighting that's coming down?
Yes.
Although it's indirect lighting and downlighting, and therefore meets the requirement of the governing body of what direct lighting is, if there was a similar light, direct lighting, all things considered, and meeting ADA requirement, is that downlight brighter or dimmer?
I'm not sure I'm following the question. I have to apologize.
Neither am I.
Dennis gets me, and I... The lumens or foot camp, the downlighting?
Yeah, like, the light coming out of the ballard. Is that what you're...
All right, how would you compare that downlighting to a direct light? What, what would be the equivalent direct light?
Are you talking about just like if light was, how the light was going to be coming out?
Yeah, the lumens or foot candles, the measurement?
You know, you wouldn't, it wouldn't be cut off, okay? So like, the way that one, it's a horizontal, like I mentioned, it's a horizontal, um, source of light. All, all the LEDs are on a board horizontally. If they were, the, the other sample, which is the one standing on the ground over there, that's actually literally, it's a, the, the lights inside there are actually vertical, okay? They're inside the, the heads. They're mounted vertically. That light source is coming out, and therefore it can be considered sky glow. And that one actually is, that manufacturer does say that that light does have some sky glow. Does that answer your...
No, but...
Sorry.
I'll grab you. Go ahead.
So if you took the board out of the ballard and put it horizontal and made it shine across the sidewalk horizontally, would that light be brighter than what we're seeing as a downlight?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Hey!
Yes.
All right.
Why didn't you do that in the first place?
We all love Cecil.
Councilman Magazine.
Did I understand you to say that the problems, I'm not putting words in your mouth, but basically the problems that people are having is caused by light, not from the bulbs themselves, but from reflection below and around the ballards?
Yes. Yes, it's, 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 it's going to be a combination of two things. One is one that was touched on earlier, and that was the color temperature. The 4,000 color temperature includes some blue spectrum light, which with an LED, the blue spectrum light, the way they, they kind of get it down to 4,000 Kelvin, the way they put the phosphors over the LEDs and try to filter out the wavelengths, that there's still some blues, which are irritating to, to, to the eye. And it's similar, you'll see it even in some cars, some of the, um, higher-end cars. Headlights have a really high color temperature, and it's irritating as they're driving at you.
Yeah.
Basically, it's so you have, you have that irritating kind of 4,000 Kelvin light kind of coming out, and then it's the reflective surfaces off, off of the, the angled surfaces below the light source in that ballard.
The surfaces below the light ballards are, uh, is, I can't picture, is it cement? Is it, I can't reflect off grass, but it's mostly cement, isn't it?
Yes. Yeah, yeah. Yes, it's like a 10-foot wide sidewalk that is adjacent to all these ballards, yes.
This may be totally off the wall. Bear with me. Hypothetically, if below the ballards was not pavement, or if it was pavement that, for example, were painted black, how would that affect the, the dispersment of the light?
It would be reduced to some point. If the, if the ball, yeah, I mean, and, and when we tested the black ballard, we noticed that it was less, uh, less, uh, not as bright.
Right. What's the relationship between the black ballard? If it's reflective, if most of it's reflective, why would the black ballard make a difference? Oh, because it's throwing down more light?
Black, okay, because, all right, so, yeah, we, those are the two ballards basically that we tested out in the field. The black one tested a little darker than the aluminum one. And that's because of just the, 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 the black itself as a color will absorb more light than, than the lighter anodized aluminum. It's a more, it's just, it's a simply more reflective surface.
So a combination of a black ballard and a black surface under it would reduce the light even further?
Yes.
It's just hypothetical.
Yes.
Okay.
It'll get dirtier.
Get dirtier.
Well, yeah, there, yes, there's other issues with, with the, and you can even see it here now that, now that it's been stood up. But, yeah, you can tell that the water, you know, the affluent water in, in the lake affects the black finishes.
Councilman Yates, um, Lachey? Yeah. It has, for me.
Just a couple of questions.
Couple of quick questions. As, as I recall, bringing you in primarily was to determine if we got shafted. In other words, did we get what we paid for? Did we get the product that we expected to get? And what's the answer to that question?
I believe, yes, yes. I don't believe that this manufacturer's misleading the town in, in, uh, in any way.
Okay, second goes, is a more technical question. And I understand this would be probably difficult to answer the question without field testing and modeling, but I'm going to ask it anyways, and, and you can give, give it your best. If we went from 700 lumens to 350 lumens, as well as from 4,000 Kelvin to 3,000 Kelvin, what would that look like? What impact would that have in comparison to what we're looking at today?
What, what Grady mentioned earlier, as far as that's very, very accurate. It would, um, the, um, 3,000 Kelvin to 4,000 Kelvin reduces the light by about 10 percent.
Okay.
And then going from the, the higher, uh, drive current, the 700 milliamp to the 350 milliamp drive current will reduce it by about 50 percent. It's almost, it's almost one-to-one. It's not exactly a scaler, but it's almost one-to-one. So the amount of lumens out of that light would be reduced probably by a total of about 60 percent.
And I believe this question was asked earlier by the mayor. If we did, if we went in a direction like that, and probably without field testing is difficult, how would that impact ADA requirements?
The, I'm not sure how the town got to the spacing that they're at today. So, you know, a, a light spacing is, you know, going to be decided based on what light levels they want to meet on the path. And, um, those light levels will be reduced significantly. So I'm not, uh, without having that background information, I don't know that I can answer my question.
Yeah, I, I understand. It's a difficult question to answer. And one last point. In order to get our arms wrapped around this as a possible solution, we would probably have to do some field testing, I would imagine, to see what...
I would, I would concur, yes.
What, what the impact is in terms of is enough light, not enough light, if the glare...
Right, and that's, a lot, it's a judgment call sometimes when it comes to, come to this type of thing.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor.
Anybody else? Uh, Councilman Hanson.
Well, if we wanted to go that far, I mean, would it be sufficient to change out maybe six lights in a row to determine what kind of a pattern that would have on the sidewalk?
Yes.
So it would be easy to kind of just, to do that on just a, a limited number of lights to see what the impact would be?
That, that's correct. Councilmember Hanson. We, Mark and I talked about that, and we thought it might be, you have the even amount on each side of the paths we have because they're both illuminating the pathway, and that would be a possibility.
Yeah, and if, particularly if you left, you know, the other ones up, you can kind of, then you could get a really nice kind of comparison.
And I just have a question for Andrew. Just a hypothetical question, since we're, we're doing those. If we did reduce the light, and let's say somebody fell or is injured, because we reduced the light after we had already had it at a certain level, would that put the town in any kind of jeopardy and, or possibly? I know anybody can sue anytime, but I, I remember when I, I, I thought a stop sign was in a really dumb place, and I said, "Could we remove that stop sign?" And I was told, "If you remove that stop sign now, and somebody has an accident, and you remove the stop sign, then we're liable because that stop sign was removed." So that's what it, I'm always thinking liability.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, as with questions like this prior, I'm not really inclined to make a public record that indicates that we think there'd be a higher liability if someone walks off a darkened path. So I, I don't really think we, we have an answer to that question. It's not something that is advisable to answer.
Madam Mayor.
Councilman Yates?
I am no attorney. I'm, but commercial real estate, if anyone has followed over the last few months, the, there's been a, a group of proa, um, proactive attorneys, instead of ambulance chasers, going after some absolutes on ADA compliance in commercial real estate. And the AGA, I'm sorry, Attorney General's Office, just found them guilty for this. But where I'm going with this is that ADA compliance is, is an absolute figure. If your sign isn't exactly 60 inches from the ground, you're out of compliance. If your ramp isn't the right slope, you're out of compliance, and the fines are somewhat astronomical. I'm not saying that here, and to everyone's point, just because you lower the, the brightness, then you have to get more lights together to get the coverage. And whatever that calculates to, it's, it's an absolute. So whatever that ADA compliance number is on lumens, foot candles, visibility, those, whatever that calculation is, it's absolute. Unfortunately, when you come to something like this, it's not about, "Well, I think it will look better if it looked like this," or "If the sign was moreover that way." It's, it's an absolute figure. Just want to share that.
Okay, thanks. Councilman Lachey?
I, I don't disagree with, with Councilman Yates. I think it would be difficult to determine. We could be over, over ADA right now. We don't know where we're at with ADA. So I think the only way to accomplish that would be through a field test. And Grady mentioned the notion, and, and Councilwoman Hanson mentioned lining up six, whatever the number is. My question there, um, how, how are, what's the circuitry on there? Is it possible to only have, I mean, what's the circuitry like? Are there different circuit breakers on different lights in series or parallel? Or could we isolate six lights?
I haven't studied the electrical plans for the lake, so...
Uh, Mark can answer, actually, because, um, I think initially when we, we met with Mr. Blank, that was a initial solution that he had, which was to have a dimming system. Mark, do you want to address that?
Yes. Mayor Kavanaugh, Councilman Lachey. There are setup on certain breakers. There's a number of those located around. But I don't know that we even have to go that far. What we did when we did the black ballers, we simply removed the aluminum ballers and put black ballers in their place. So I think we could accomplish that by putting, if that was the council's desire, we could put those in, in an area, and then test only in that particular area. So I think we can accomplish that.
That answers my question. Thank you.
Mark, could you just, um, before you go, how many, what, what's the hours that the lights are on in the summer versus the winter?
Uh, there is no variance in, in the hours on the...
But I think in the summer, we had a special request to have them on a little earlier.
My recollection was, we were turning them on at 5 o'clock, which is an hour technically before the park opens, and then off at 11.
Okay, so, and the winter, would it, would it change? Or would it go back to six, or?
We have it modified.
Okay, so it would be 5 to 11?
Yeah, we, we got the request from some people that were early walkers, and we didn't draw any distinction, and they didn't either between summer and winter.
Okay, okay, thank you. Councilman Magazine.
Feel a little like I'm in an MIT classroom, and I'm flunking the course.
I'm right with their old...
You want the engineer back.
Yeah. If we did field test, and we found that it was ADA compliant, and it did light the walkway the way we want, the fix is new bulbs, correct? At a cost of $77,000.
If, if you did the test based on what the scenario just...
Well, I'm talking about the scenario that Councilman Lachey was talking about.
And if we met those levels, yes. The only question I would have, again, assuming that they met the levels, that's the only question I would have. And obviously, there's a, there's a cost involved that we would have to...
No, I'm assuming they do meet the levels. I'm assuming you replace the bulbs, you do a field test.
Okay.
And everything's satisfactory.
Okay.
So then you decide, you, you, then the question is, do we want to do that for all the ballards? Correct?
Correct.
And we're talking, is it the $77,000 figure? 77 plus?
Tax.
Plus tax, freight, and everything. I just want to make sure I'm crystal clear on this. Yes, is that you? Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Councilman Yates?
Along the same lines, it was installed and designed and laid out by a licensed, certified architect who did the counts to make sure we met at least the minimum threshold, meaning today, right here, right now, we are ADA compliant. We would not have this installed otherwise.
Correct. Assuming that they got everything right, okay, based on his analysis, they did, did get everything right. Recognize that you're going to have higher levels of light by the posts themselves. And as you walk that 10 feet to the end of that light, and the other one takes over, that light, to me, is much more critical in the middle there than it is at each ballard.
Right. The only reason I'm bringing that up is that, to everyone's point, if that, if we make the lights in some way, shape, or form, changing light bulbs, ballast, ballards, and lower it, obviously, there's a new calculation. We know right now that it meets ADA compliance, whether or not it's above ADA compliance in the capacity. That's what we're talking about. To the attorney's point, we are in ADA compliance. We are not out of compliance whatsoever. We know that it's licensed, bonded, stamped, architect-designed, that we meet compliance. So all we're talking about is potentially how far above ADA compliance are we, that we might be able to dim it. Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. So the life expectancy of, of the LED bulb is how many years?
I don't know what the manufacturer says on these bulbs. On average, LEDs, they say is about, um, I think about 75,000 hours. And if you're running them six, I don't know, it's...
A lot.
It's a lot.
Can't you do that in your head?
If you run them six hours a day, yeah, I don't, it, it's a lot. It's probably, you know, in the, on average, they say about, the, the LED itself, they say, you know, anywhere from 10 to 20 years. On, um, it, it's just a typical LED product, though. I'm not familiar with this manufacturer's, um...
Mayor, council, just if I can add to the question. Keep in mind that this is, you know, seven days a week, 52 weeks a year. There's environmental conditions, the heat, and other things that really play into this, unlike what you might have in your household. And, and my experience with LEDs in my house, they're expensive, and I end up going through them like every two, two and a half years, so...
Councilman Brown?
You know, I'm doing something wrong.
I've got, yeah, I actually have LED lights with the same 4,000 K. It's a very commercial look, and I have it in my office specifically because it's an industrial look in the, in the office. And they are nine years old. I have 28 of them, and I haven't replaced any of them to date. So I'm, I'm quite content with what we're doing. But I don't, I, you know, we're talking up here like there's something wrong with what we've got, and I'm not seeing what's wrong with what we've got. I live directly across the street, li, literally 100 yards or less to the, to the lights. And I've lived there now for just short of 11 years, and I've watched what goes on in the park... And I've watched what goes on in the park pretty consistently. And what we've got right now has attracted more activity in the summer evenings. In one, in one summer, we've had more activity in our park, which that's what we want. We've had more activity in our park in one summer than we had in the other previous nine years total. I mean, it was, it was active and it was full of people and it was fun. And, and I don't know why we're talking like it's broken. It, it meets the requirements. It's, is it bright white? Yes, it is. And I don't know if we go to the 3,000 K lights that we'll have an adequate light for it. And I, because I'm not an engineer and don't want to be an engineer. But where we use them in our residential houses, it is, it is a, it is a much more gold light, warmer light than what we've got. Granted, it's a different look, but what we've got's not bad. I mean, we're seriously up here talking like it's a problem and I'm not seeing the problem. Get up at four o'clock in the morning, walk the fountain, the lights come on at 4:30, by the way, Mark. That was the request and I appreciate that.
We actually got two. The first one was five o'clock, the other one was 4:30. So we've moved back a couple of times.
Okay, well, I know that this morning they came on at 4:30. And you walk the park at 4:30 in the morning and there's a very distinct group of people that walk early in the morning. It's the same group as all the groups are. They all have their times to walk. And you ask the people, "Is it nice out here?" And they all say, "Yeah, it's great. For the first time, I feel safe." It's the same thing late at night when we go out for a summer evening after the sun goes down at 8:30, 9:00 o'clock and go for a walk. It's busy and the people are there because they feel safe. So I don't think our lights are broken. I'm not, I'm not going to say, "Let's spend $77,000 today." If the, if the lights start going out three or four years down the road, I think we have the conversation that when we replace them, we replace them all so we don't look like a pretty smile with a bad tooth in your mouth and do it all at once because the difference in the light is so dramatic, it would not be pretty. And what we've got right now, humble opinion, is pretty.
And just to follow up to what Dennis said, I think the whole point of this was to respond to the concern of some of the citizens. And I think we've gone above and beyond. I think staff has been very, very responsive to those, the concerns and questions. And I think that's been accomplished.
Anything else from council before we go to the public?
Yes, Mayor. So does anyone purchase used lamps?
Not that I'm aware of.
So basically, there's no use for those.
Scrap metal.
Yeah, I don't, no, yeah, not that I'm aware of.
Okay, that was tongue-in-cheek. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. Our speaker cards?
Mayor, we have eight cards, four of who do not wish to speak, but their note is the same. It says, "Correct the lights in the park." So the four speakers are Ted Blank, followed by Donna Brinkmeyer, then Amber Lee Dubrowski, and then Tina Gleisner.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, council members, I wanted to mention that all four of, oh, sorry, Ted Blank.
We live in Fountain Hills.
Live in Fountain Hills, have a house here. I wanted to mention that all four of my parents, my grandparents emigrated here from Poland. So in honor of our guests, I was going to give all of my talk in Polish, even though I don't speak a word of it. So that's off the agenda, so there you go. You're safe from having to hear me try to say anything in Polish. I'm one of a group of concerned residents and homeowners who use the park frequently after dark. We have worked very hard over the past year to try to help the staff provide information and education on the intricacies of lighting engineering. It's not an easy task to understand. MIT, yeah, that's exactly right. I felt sometimes like I was in the back of the class there, too. And we've all had to become more familiar with that as we went through this process of learning. As part of these investigations, I searched the town and looked at every bollard that I could find and took photographs of them. So I want to show you some pictures tonight. These are photographs of the bollards that I could find in the town during the day. Every one of these bollards that you can see on the left, the upper left has, is in front of the council, the community center. The other three are either on Avenue of the Fountains or in the park or down at the foothill, the foot of Avenue of the Fountains. They all have louvers on them. And there's a reason. Those louvers control the light from reflecting up into the sky and into the eyes of people who pass by. The exception, of course, as you see here in the example behind us, is the 287 bollards in the park. They are without louvers. And so the light that shines down out of the cap reflects directly off that mirrored surface and goes straight up into the sky, into the eyes of the people walking in the park and, of course, onto the homes across the street. As you know, we've sat in the park and asked people, "Would you prefer lights without louvers or we'll put some louvered caps over the bollards that are there?" And said, "Would you, which do you like?" So far, between the two petitions, one of which you'll hear about tonight, 350 people have said they prefer the lights in the park to have louvers. No one is saying that the lights in the park do not sufficiently illuminate the path. What they're saying is that in addition to illuminating the path, the lights reflect light up into the eyes of the people walking on the path and make it difficult to see the path, interfere with safety by the fact that you can't see animals on the other side of the path. One gentleman said he can't walk at night anymore because the glare of the lights makes it impossible for him to see coyotes in the morning, so he only works, he only walks in the daytime now. And another set of people who walked past us the other night, they were walking way over by the lake. And we said, "Come over, we want to talk to you." And they said, "No, we walk on the grass because the lights are too bright for us at night. We will walk over there where it's, where we're comfortable."
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to request some extra time since we've put a significant amount of time into this.
We have all of your information. The council's read everything. Thank you.
May I show you the additional photographs here?
We have, we have all of your pictures.
These are the photographs that I took of the bollards as they stand in the park. The bollard that you see on the right reflect, represents what people who are walking in the park see. So I have to disagree with Councilman Brown.
Excuse me, we have all of this information. We have your entire packet.
Understand.
So thank you. We're going to have, bring up Donna Brinkmeyer.
Madam Mayor, council members, my name is Donna Brinkmeyer and I live here in Fountain Hills. My husband and I own a house here. I'd like to ask four questions and answer four questions tonight. The first question is, do the bollard lights produce uplight and glare? Or are they full cutoff, zero uplight fixtures? In his report, Mr. Columbo states, "The fixtures are full cutoff or zero uplight as the light is not directly visible above the fixture." Well, what does that mean? What that means is that right here, there's no light coming out of the fixture. Duh, of course, there's no light coming up out of the top of the fixture. Our citizens group has never maintained that there was light coming up out of the fixture. We've maintained all along that the problem is caused by the lights reflecting off the aluminum surfaces, angled surfaces below the lights. And Mr. Columbo admitted as much tonight. He said, "The light that is being observed above the fixture is due to the reflective angled surfaces of the aluminum bollard." So Mr. Columbo clearly states that there is light above the horizontal. It's not just coming through, it's, it's not coming through the cap, it's being reflected. So the answer to the first question is yes, light is above the horizontal and it is being reflected and glare does exist. Mr. Columbo says so, the Dark Sky Society says so, our own measurements say so, 400 petition signers say so. And I had another petition for you here tonight. And since the report never mentioned the first one that we had, I brought another copy of it as well. Our second question is, if the, if, if these lights produce uplight and glare, why were they purchased? And they were purchased from Lithonia based on Lithonia's misleading specifications that the lights were zero uplight, full cutoff, and meeting the most stringent of the lighting codes. Again, their specifications were not done on the aluminum bollards. They did not measure reflective light. They reflected direct light. And you can't assume that direct light and reflected light are the same. And to measure just one and to not measure the other is, is not an honest thing to do. The third question, why should the town correct the lighting problem? Mostly because there were 400 people in town who say there is a problem. The 400 people who walked in the park and signed our petitions indicated that there was a problem. Of the 400 people who signed the petition, we had maybe 10 who said they didn't see a problem with the lights. The second reason to solve the problem is that the town simply did not get what they paid for. The lights and their installation cost over half a million dollars.
Okay, thank you. Could you just wrap your time up?
To get what we paid for is a reasonable expectation of city government. As a town council, you are stewards of our tax dollars and you should want to get what we paid for as well. Thank you.
Amber Lee Dubrowski. It's Polish day.
It is. I want to eat Polish.
I know that.
And I'm also a 16th German I've learned, so how about that?
There you go.
I know. I'm Amber Lee Dubrowski, town of Fountain Hills, resident for almost five years now. And thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. First, I just want to do a quick little shout out for tourism. Yay. I have McCann Erickson in my background, which is a world-renowned global advertising agency. And I've seen a lot of good work. I've worked with a lot of luxury brands. And we've got some luxury quality stuff going on, so I know they're not here, but I just wanted to give a shout out. I'd like to think that when these were originally approved, that they were to the ADA compliance as we know. But also that it would have been minimally, the minimal light that's needed for ADA, knowing that everybody wants to keep the dark skies and so forth. So I would be interested in knowing whether we went brighter or not. But it seems like we did get what we custom ordered. And we're getting, as a matter of fact, 73% less than what we should have expected from the specs of the manufacturer. I'd like to say that I think some of this reflective glare could also be from the cement that is around the fountain. And perhaps we could look into a more reasonably option of roughing out the cement. I'm not sure if that's the proper term. I know it is for a saddle, but not so much for cement. But I would like to see, is there another more fiscally responsible solution that we can find besides replacing all of those lights? Because I do think that it is a safer environment. It's safer for me, for my kids. I was here pre-light. I live here now, obviously. And I enjoy the fountain and I appreciate what it has to offer. And I certainly don't want to spend another half a million dollars to replace it all. I think that's irresponsible. And I just want to, I guess, wrap it with that. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, who was the last person?
Tina Gleisner.
Tina Gleisner?
Hi, I'm Tina Gleisner. I own a house with my husband here in Fountain Hills. And we moved here specifically for the dark skies. So basically, for the minimal lighting in town. And because we live on a busy street with no streetlights, we do try to walk through the fountain park every night. But I'd be happy to meet you at 4:30 in the morning because I am up by five anyways. And I want to reflect on, you know, we've only been here less than two years so far, but we've been pretty active in a number of different efforts going on in town. And what I find really, really surprising, this is a retirement community. There are many, many people here highly skilled with free time because they're retired to really help the town make this a better place to live. And yet, I really get the feeling, from what I've seen so far, that there's an adversarial relationship between the townspeople and what's happening in the town council. And I don't really understand that. I mean, it's like, they're here, they're a great resource. They don't cost anything because they, they want to work with your people and make this a better place. And we're not, I don't feel like we're working together. And so I just offer some ideas. First of all, I'm sure you can sell the light bulbs. In fact, I would suggest that you can probably sell the light fixtures. If you pulled the bollards out, you could probably sell them. Might take some creativity, but it would be possible. I mean, you've all heard of Craigslist. I mean, and there's Craigslist for commercial as well. So another thing is, it seems like you don't have enough resources on the staff of the town, and I understand that, so you're subcontracting out to a single expert. But if you engage townspeople to do more research, like, how about before you have an engineering firm draw the bollard plan, why not have some townspeople do some research? I mean, that's what the internet's all about today. And go out and find some great examples and talk to other towns and find out what's working and what's not working so that you don't have to stumble into the same problems that somebody else discovered years ago. And that's really what I want to say is, I really would like, you know, to feel like there's community spirit here, there's partnership, and that we're all working to the same goals. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Council, any, there's no more question. Any further questions for staff or for Mike? Comments?
No questions.
That's okay. Comments? Welcome. Go.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank Ted Blank and Donna Brinkmeyer and the other folks who are here and the people who signed the petition. They came at this very seriously. And to the woman who just spoke, I know a lot of research was done looking into this by the citizens, which I think really helps us. I must comment that I don't really see the adversarial relationship. I mean, any decision this council makes, there are going to be people opposed to it. I don't care what the issue is, but we have a lot of, we work closely with a lot of our citizens to try to resolve issues or problems. I think I comment the lighting situation perhaps a little different than some of my colleagues in this respect. I said previously, and I'll repeat, that I do think the lights are a little too bright. I would like to see them a bit dimmer, lighting up the walkway. However, here's the sticking point for me. We have no money. We simply don't have the money. The least expensive fix, as I understand it, and I may be wrong, is close to $100,000 by the time you add tax and freight and everything else. And if we were going to spend $100,000, if the council decided to spend $100,000, I would want to know what other things we need in town that cost $100,000 so we could set some priorities. I'm not convinced that changing the lights in the park would meet that test. So while I'm in agreement that the lights are a bit bright and I would like to see them a bit dimmer, I for one could never support spending this kind of money on these lights, number one. And number two, if the council decided to spend $100,000 on anything, I'd want to know what we're not spending it on.
Okay, Councilman LaChee?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like our consultant to approach the mic. What, what I'm wrestling with is that I've read your report, I've heard your testimony, I've read what has been submitted by Mr. Blank and the. I've, I've read what has been submitted by Mr. Blank and the experts that he has consulted with. Ms. Brinkmeyer just came up and basically contradicted everything that you've said. So I'm, I'm at a loss at two, to where, where the date is at. Do you recall the four items that she mentioned? And if so, could you address those?
I, I don't know. More by heart, but.
Yeah, okay. Yeah. The one, first one was light. You stated light is not above, we don't have uplight, it's not above the horizon.
Don't have direct uplight above the horizon, it's being reflected. And then I also stated that by definition, the way it's classified per IESNA, like reflected light off of the adjacent structure of the fixture is not considered uplight by, yeah, by definition. Basically saying that the, it, the, the information that the manufacturer published is not wrong because it's reflected light.
Okay.
They only are required by IES to report direct light and, as uplight.
When you're engaged in your measurements, did you measure above the fixture?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The impression that was given was that the light wasn't coming through the top of the fixture, but what you're saying is you measured above the fixture. And based on that, did you have uplight or was it reflective light that you were measuring?
There's light above the fixture, but it's being caused from the reflection of the, of the, of the, it's reflected light.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mike? Any other council discussion? Would anyone care to make a motion?
I have one more comment.
Oh, absolutely.
If I may, Mayor.
Sure.
Thank you.
Councilman Brown?
I don't want you to think in any way that I don't appreciate everything you're doing. I, I think you have done an outstanding job of what you set out to do. Where I struggle is that it doesn't matter, and I, I don't want to sound cold about this, but it doesn't matter what we do. If we took every other bollard out and we changed it to a three thousand lumen light, kiln light, it would make another, it would make another group unhappy that it would be not light enough to walk around the fountain. I mean, it, it is such a struggle and it's such a balance to try to, to try to make the majority of the people happy. I've, I've taken calls, I've taken calls on both sides of it, I've got emails on both sides of it. And I don't want you to think that I don't, I'm not appreciative of what your effort is because you've gone through a lot of work and it is appreciated. But as it was pointed out, the struggle with the town is, if, if we had a hundred thousand dollars and we didn't have anything to do with it, I, I would probably look at it differently. But my comment is the same. If the lights last three or four years or ten years, when they start going out, then I think we really look at and have it investigated to see if we can go to a more golden lighter, softer light. But as we've got right now, I don't, I cannot support spending any more staff time or any more money on changing the light fixtures or the bulbs. And that would be my motion.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any other council discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor six-zero.
Thank you. Okay, we didn't have anything directed to the town manager and I just want to mention some thank yous and some activities from today and then that'll be, and then we'll be done. Just before this meeting, we held a reception for the Polish and German exchange students, dignitaries and chaperones who accompanied them. I want to thank Elizabeth Mate Horshum, wife of our consul of Poland, for organizing, purchasing and setting up all of the refreshments. At the beginning of this meeting, you got to see some of the students who are here from Zamosz, Poland and Deirdorf, Germany. In order to help with the expenses of the student exchange program, Fountain Hills Sister Cities Commission held a fundraiser at the community center. I want to thank all those members for volunteering so much of their time to make the fundraiser a success. Polish and German exchange students visited town hall, got to meet all the staff. Each staff member greeted the group as I brought them around the building and explained each person's job description. The group was accompanied by the two vice presidents of Zamosz, Poland, the chaperones from Germany and the consul of Poland, Borgemo Horshum. Also accompanying the students was Sister Cities High School Coordinator, Jennifer Ray. The students will be here for two weeks and I also want to thank all of their host families. We had a ribbon cutting for another business in town, direct PT, Dr. Norma Ford opened her offers here. It was a pleasure to welcome her to our town. I also want to thank the staff for doing an outstanding job presenting to the Fountain Hills Leadership Academy. And thanks to our town manager, Grady Miller, for allowing all the staff to take time out of the busy day to speak to the academy students. The Leadership Academy students are residents of our town who want to learn all about our government and all other aspects of our town and congratulations for them for taking that initiative. The many families enjoyed movie in the park, it was a big success. They got to watch Zootopia, again thanking the town staff for doing an outstanding job and to the business sponsors who helped the town fund the two movies we show each year. Fountain Hills Public Art Committee dedicated a new bronze, FDR, which placed in the area with the other presidents. That area, as you know, has been named Fount Rushmore and is filling up quickly. We hope that this will be a tourist attraction as visitors come to take photos with their favorite president. And if there's nothing else, can I get a motion to adjourn? You have something?
Real quick, Make a Difference Day, this Saturday, seven o'clock. It's not too late. Great community event along the, the lines of tourism and the awards. Heather Ware and that committee earned a national award last year for all the participation with Make a Difference Day here in Fountain Hills. Thank you, Mayor.
And that reminds me Halloween in the Hills. If you would like to have a booth, if you're a business, organization, see Stephanie over at Sammy's, she's still looking for more booths and there's still time to sign up. Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, all in favor? Any opposed?